Good afternoon. I'd like to open up Evolus City Council Meeting for February 18th, 2025 at 2:00 P.M. Can we get a call to order, please, Jackie?
Yes, Councilor Rowzy.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Thank you very much. We need approval of the minutes, the minutes for the City Council Workshop that was held on February 3rd of 2025. Move to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Move, Koyvenen, second, Purpich, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved, moving forward. We have the minutes of the City Council Meeting on February 4th of 2025. Do we have anybody to move to?
Move forward on those. So move.
Move. Second? Did I hear you, Koyvenen?
Yep.
Purpich? Somebody? Mr. Koyvenen? I hear support, thank you. Any further conversation on those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Approval of tonight's agenda. Did anybody have anything that they would like to add to tonight's agenda? It's as short one as it is. You want to talk? Nope, okay. Jackie, did you have anything last second?
I don't, thanks.
Okay. Move to approve the agenda?
So move.
Move by Purpich, second?
Support.
We have support by Rowzy. Any further discussion? Wonderful, we'll use today's agenda to move forward. Open up the floor for any public comment. There'll be a three-minute timeline, but please, if you have anything you'd like to bring up, anybody at all, feel free to step to the table. We do have a visitor named Pastor Nathan who'll be stepping up after this, so you don't have to worry about that, as you've got on the agenda, sir. Nobody? Okay. Then we will move into the appointment of presentation. So Pastor Nathan, if you'd like to join us, he is from Woodlands Bible Church here in town.
Great, it's good to be here. Congratulations. Really thankful to be here. I want to give you guys an update for the food drive. I have what I'm going to read to you, I just have it printed off for you guys.
Thanks, Jackie.
Appreciate that. This will be covering the finances. We get donations coming in, so this just gives you a record of money that came in, how we used it, and how many families we were able to help. We're looking forward to input and ideas, how to make this better. As you can kind of see, the goal is always to help more families, but there's been a recent decline. So we really would love to reach more families. And just requires a few things. We need more nominations and more donations. So that's always been the struggle, to try to get families that we can help. We're thinking maybe earlier notice in the utility bills, whether it's two mailers or one. Let us know. We've accessed a lot of helpers. If it's just a personnel issue, we'd love to help in any way we can. And consistency in advertising would be helpful, too. Because, as you know, there's different things going out, it can become very confusing. People don't know when to put things out and when it's getting picked up. So just consistency would be helpful, too. Yeah, we're talking to Guy and Evolus Fire Department, just to try to figure out how we could do these things. We're talking about moving it to Thanksgiving instead. There's a few reasons why that may be helpful. There is less assistance available to people in Thanksgiving versus Christmas. Seems like there's a lot of things open around Christmas time than there would be around Thanksgiving. I did put in there that it tends to be very cold, and the night that the guys went out, men and women went out, it was negative 25 real deal. And I said, anybody paying attention? Anybody in Evolus, if they see, you know, them going down the streets, I think it sends a strong message to the community that a little cold is not going to stop our team. They run into help, they need help. You know, our Evolus Fire Department and EMT, a little cold is not going to stop them from getting out and helping. So I thought that was really cool. Didn't stop them. And also, December tends to be a pretty busy time of year, so just trying to look for ways to be a help, a blessing instead of a burden. That's kind of our motto there. But we're very thankful to everybody that worked hard to make this possible. And I guess I'd entertain any questions that you guys have for, to us, and that we can take back the team.
Well, I think you're moving forward with the Thanksgiving is a great idea. Yeah, there's very little snow. You don't have to trudge between yards to pick up whatever. A lot of people don't shovel their sidewalks, as is evidenced by the last couple of storms we've had. So, you know, I think moving forward, just, you know, it's a good time, there's better weather, certainly. I would like to see that. What's this earlier notice on utility bills? I don't understand what that's about.
Are you just asking us to get more information out a little bit sooner regarding it via the utility bill?
Yeah, yeah, just to kind of give people an ample notice.
Oh.
Until it becomes commonplace where people know it's at this time, so they can kind of be getting ready, but
Okay.
Maybe earlier notices would be a lot more helpful. That's what that was. Very good point about the weather. We don't know what's going to happen.
I just want to thank you for what you're doing. It's a very worthwhile effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys very much. We're very happy to be here. We love Evolus, and we're very thankful to be a part of it. So appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we'll have the approval of payroll for January 16th through the 31st of 2025. Is someone moved to move forward with that?
So move.
Second?
Support.
Purpich and Koyvenen, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's pay our people, thank you. Request from the Police Chief to attend the 2025 Minnesota Chief of Police Executive Training. Chief, motion to approve?
So move.
Move by Chief, excuse me, by Mr. Lillis. Support?
All support.
Support by Purpich. Chief? Anything you want to?
I see here the Chief's Conference, it's in Rochester this year. Our Chiefs' Law Order of the State of Minnesota, and their command staff. They bring little presenters from all over the country to play. Some really good speakers, they're really good networking. So I've learned a lot, I've met a lot of Evolus Chiefs there that I've actually, I've had to call for advice and different. Yeah, it's good.
Perfect, and then things like this all come out of the budget that you create at the meeting, correct?
Excuse me, they'll come out right into your budget.
Okay. Wonderful. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chief, learned lots, thank you, sir. Next up is request for four firefighters to attend the Morehead Fire and Rescue School on March 29th through the 30th of this year in Morehead. This is Fire Chief Guy who is requesting to send these firefighters down there. And this is a budgeted expense as well, correct?
Yes, it is.
Wonderful. Motion to move?
Motion made.
Motion, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? Jackie, do you have anything to add to that, or is it pretty cut and dry from what I was reading? It's just continued education?
Yes, it's pretty cut and dry, and what the chief does, he kind of looks at the landscape of what trainings are available, and then he kind of picks and chooses whether they need refreshers or retraining. Some years ago, they went to a conference called FDIC, which was in Indianapolis, and they found that valuable, but are getting more value these last couple of years, just staying in the state and sending more people.
Wonderful. Love that. More people, the better. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, we'll send them on their way as well. And the last one is request for three fire department officers to attend the Duluth Fire Officer in Training Officer School, March 14th through the 16th, 2025, in Duluth. Again, this is Fire Chief that is requesting to send, this is also part of their budget, or in their budget as well. Do we have a motion to move?
So move.
Move by Koyvenen, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion?
Did we have a turnover in officers? Did we have a turnover in officers, or are we sending the same people that we sent last year?
Well, we could be sending the same people, but they change up the agenda and force an increase. And I recall last year, they may not have taken this one.
But I know we still have the same chief and assistant, correct?
Yes.
I can't speak for the next two after that, but you know what, that's a great question. I'll reach out to Chief, just to ask.
I don't want to deprive him of any kind of training, I just, just redundant training is redundant training. If there's something different in here that they have to definitely go after, you know.
And I think it's also, it's about the camaraderie, having the conversations with other departments, which is really helpful. But in order to keep folks attending trainings, they really change up the agenda every year, so you can get some of the same people back.
Well, it's good to keep up with local or state regulations and stuff, too. I'm not opposed to sending anybody, but just kind of wanted to know.
Yeah. Well, to your point, when I read it, I was, the only thing that I questioned is it just said classes from 8 to 5. It really wasn't a breakdown, but I trust Chief, obviously, to be looking for the correct coursework that they should be going to. I was hoping to just read about whatever they were going to be doing, but that's okay. I trust him. Full trust. Any further discussion on that, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Nothing in the public hearing, and weird, nothing in unfinished business, yet again, we are amazing people here. New business. Proposal from Northeast Technical Services for the Bus Garage Limited Phase 2. So we are going to continue testing in the bus garage of purchase, that is correct, right?
Correct, yep. So the bus garage is a part of the entire purchase by the city of the school campus, and we did a Phase 1, and there's some recognizable environmental conditions.
All right, is there any further discussion or questions regarding it? Joel wants to answer what's on page seventeen, so fire away. If there is nothing further, all in favor to move forward with this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So this leads us to the next one then, which is a service order with Winseth for the multipurpose building, the boiler system that we are in, and obviously in need of to have heat there. Jackie, do you want to elaborate on that?
Sure, so last year, when the city council decided that the city wanted to take possession and heat that building, we knew that there was a need for some temporary heat and permanent heat as that big boiler building that was on the west side of the high school steam plant was disconnected. So last year, you folks accepted some proposal, I think it was like October, November, and so this again just memorializes, goes back and memorializes it as their term service order.
Is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Motion by Rousey, support?
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, is there any further discussion or questions regarding this at all? So I guess the only question that I had is, we work with them always, most of the time, sometimes, so when it came to this, did we have other bids, or is this just what we did?
So I'm gonna say most of the time we work with them, because we've had really good luck with them, and according to state statute, now law this over to Joel, the attorney, that we're not required to professional services, but I'll let him talk about that.
That's correct. Yeah, and we've worked with them for quite a while. I'll say just a little bit about these AIA contracts. They're pretty straightforward, but if you get lost after page one or two, you can always go to the back, they have a section that is additions and deletions, which has things that have been added in or deleted from the form contract. So these are like form contracts that architects use all over, and Winseth employs those, and so that allows you to take a look and see, okay, what did they change in this? So in the master agreement, there's only a few things that were changed relative to the length of that document. This one on the service order itself, quite a bit of this changed, because it's really specific to our needs here, but that still allows you to go here and see what's been added, what they're gonna be doing, what, take an hour, and why, basically, it's listed in it, so I ever read over these, and they're available.
Perfect, thank you very much, Joel, appreciate that.
Thank you, Danny.
Is there any further discussion or any questions regarding it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Excuse me, up next is the updated fire department officer's positions. Fire chief Guy is requesting approval of the attached updated fire department officer's position descriptions, councilors Lilis and Coivin and city council public safety committee have reviewed these positions. So as of general break, oh, I can't do that, we have to do a motion first, so, motion to move.
So move.
Move by Coivin, do we, support by Lilis. All right, were there any discussion or anything along those lines?
So from what I'm gathering, there was just a few changes in terms and sentencing here?
Yeah.
You know, got rid of mutual aid and just said fire?
Yep.
Because we're all responding, everybody responds to a fire, and we're all in the mutual aid agreement with all the other cities, excuse me, with the city, and the other cities around the area?
A whole kind of housekeeping changes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I just had a question, so this, by looking at this, it looks like it had not been changed since 2017, is that true?
You are correct.
Is there a reason why we would wait so long, was there absolutely no need for change over the last eight years, or is it just something that might have fallen through the cracks and we're picking it up?
I think the latter.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
And that the changes aren't really, I'll use Joel for substitute, we're just doing some housekeeping.
Yeah, I saw that, and then obviously it works nice when you have all the changes highlighted right in what you're doing, it means a lot easier to read.
Yeah, it was easy reading, and if I'm not mistaken, we reviewed some other ones, you know, I've only been here like four years or three and a half years now, but seems to me we reviewed some other reworking, so it's not like we missed some, I don't think, per se, but, you know, and it's good for them to go through and read their bylaws and update it, you know, there's nothing wrong with that.
I think we go through not only with this, it's other ones that, all it is is clean up what had been said, you know, to get it back up into the nows rather than eight years ago, and you just clean up the wordage, and it's the same thing, but it's said differently.
I'm glad they took the time to go through it and revamp it and fix it up, that's great.
And by no means did I mean any disrespect in saying that, I just was curious if, if there were other updates that just weren't shown on there, but it's all good. Was there any other discussion? Chief's not here with us today to say anything. No further discussion? All approve to move forward with that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right, updated fire department administrative guidelines, I guess, motion to move?
So move.
Support.
Move by Purpich, support by Coivin, discussion on the table. Anybody have any questions or any thoughts? Nope, I felt in this one, all it did is got a lot more specific, which is a good thing, I felt like it was really narrowing downwards and getting right to the point, so, again, whomever is acknowledging that they should do it this way by putting the changes on here, I know I do this at my work too, that it does make it a lot easier to go through than try to grab the one from five years ago or eight years ago and try to go back and forth and compare them, so I like that we're using this practice and doing so. If there's no further discussion and no questions for anybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Next up is a letter from the Evlith Heritage Society requesting display the Franklin Elementary WPA mural at the fine arts multipurpose building. In your packet, oh, motion to move?
So move.
Move by Rousey, support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, discussion?
Sure.
So, I had a conversation with Figgy, he has, above and beyond like, he does and everybody else that's part of the Heritage Society, but they were able to save the mural that was once inside the elementary school, before the school was torn down. They raised the money, it was removed by a gentleman out of ZIM, who is a kind of like a curator, so to speak, of art and murals, I mean, we're seriously lucky to have somebody like that so close to our community, and then do it for a very reasonable amount of money. So phase one was acquiring it and having it taken down, phase two was repairing it and preserving the mural for the future, and what they're asking for and what they're looking for is a home for this mural. It's not small, and I had a conversation, we want to call texting a conversation, Jerry and I are like a bunch of high school girls and boys, but we were texting back and forth about locations, and he had his staff check out inside the school building that we were looking to purchase, outside the band hall, or what was the band hall, and that wall, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry seems to, would be suitable for what we're looking into.
Yeah, it looks like there's two walls that are suitable for that size, it's on the second floor of the gym there.
And it'd be...
Both that long is working.
Right, I mean, it's eight feet tall by, I just forgot off the top of my head now what it is, twenty-some feet.
Yeah, so I think it's near over twenty.
Yeah.
It's twenty feet long, eight feet high?
Yeah.
The wall.
The mural.
The mural is right in the same ballpark though.
Oh, the mural's, how big is the mural, Jared? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Eight by twenty-something, and the wall is nine by twenty-something as well. Yeah, it's large, it's large. The goal was not to put it in the gym, because in the future, we hope to have community yet in the gym, and if baseball's gonna be in there, I don't want to see anything like this ever destroyed, for us to then turn around and buy a black grate system to go in front of to protect it, eludes the point of them paying the money to make this thing the way it is, so. I had talked to other people in the community, and some people have even been willing to put it on the outsides of their building, but I feel like inside the school is
Better job.
Probably the best place for this.
I agree, that's where the memories were made, so.
Right.
Put it there.
So as of now, it's hard to say that we will put it there, because we technically don't own a building yet, isn't that correct?
Correct, we have it under lease.
We have it under lease, oh, we're leasing the building. So what their goal is, is to have the curator, we use that word, finished his work in the building and hang it right away, so it's not being worked on somewhere else and then brought somewhere to be put up, it would just be easier for them, so where they're at is, once we've said, yes, this is the spot you can use, we would just have to work with Jerry then to make sure they can get in the building to get the mural there and installed.
I guess one of my concerns is, I hope it does go up there, but we've got temporary heat and heating going in there right now, correct, Jared?
Yes.
And with the plan to revamp the heating and the cooling system, HVAC system and everything in that building, which is, I'm assuming is our plan, would this be in the way of any rehabbing of the building?
No, this is on a brick wall, I block walls, I mean, I can't simply put any computer, or use the existing fence and...
I agree, but things moving around, pieces, parts, this thing and everything, once we get it hung, I think it should be, you know, covered until the building is ready for occupancy somehow, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I can speak to Figgy too, where he has it now might work just fine until we're comfortable with the building being completed, and then bring it in at that point. Our goal, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this stuff was kind of voted on a little bit before me, I guess, or talked about, but we're hoping to have not temporary heat for the coming winter, correct?
Right.
This is being tackled?
Correct, yep, the property will be worked on yet this spring.
So I'll have a conversation with Figgy, just let him know, like, we haven't voted on it yet, but it sounds like we're headed that way, we're on board, we want to wait till this work inside the building is done, so that nothing that you paid for gets ruined.
That's right.
Absolutely.
That's, that was my point, I don't want anything to step in the way of this thing.
So with that being said, do we, do we vote on accepting that we will allow it to be put up at this point in that building?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, we'll do that then. Is there any further discussion on this at all? Nope, okay, so, all in favor of allowing this mural to be placed inside the school that we are leasing at this point, for soon to be buying, on one of the two walls that Jerry has found for us on the second level, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, wonderful. I will, I'll have further conversation with Figgy, let him know timelines, and I'll work with Jerry on that too, I don't mind helping out here. And I just want to say thank you to the Evlith Heritage Society, and thank you to Figgy for all of their work to save something like this, because it easily could have just been on a wall when the building was bashed down and done, so thank you to everybody who was a part of that. Next up is a letter from United Way of Northeastern Minnesota requesting to bring a born learning trail to Evlith. Motion to move?
So move.
Move by Purpich, support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, discussion?
I, again, I see this as a good thing for families and kids, a place to put it would be, another question, someplace where it's gonna be visible. Jerry, you're pointing to Jerry, that Jerry, you found a spot for it, Jerry?
I haven't found a spot, but I mean, there's only so many places to do it, Northside Park is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Right.
Fail on, I wouldn't do it on, you know, a can of ice, so, but, Northside Park, something like that, I'd expect, it's all for a little spot.
That was, that was mine also, and then the other, the other spot I thought might be the sidewalk going up past where the school was torn down by the tennis courts and the playground that's there. I mean, I'm just, I just, you know, I've been thinking about parks and recreation and stuff like that for the city. Ideally, if all our buildings were up on the school property already housed kids and people in there, that would be the place to put it, but you have a certain amount of children up at the, beat up places up there, and the housing up there by the water tower, might be a good place to start, but again, the park does get used down on Northside, I see kids and families going in there, so, first, let them, I guess let them decide which would be the best venue for them, I guess, Jared, you can make a suggestion and see what they think.
Offer a vocal assault opportunities and you can decide.
You know, because you have, you know, you could come down Jones Street, now I guess you couldn't, because we've got plans for that, but maybe find a place for them, I think this is a good thing, I'd like to go forward with it.
One place that I had thought about, I understand that we don't have a lot of concrete there right now, but I mean, it's one of those things where, whether or not the city looks forward into getting into it a little bit, or we just look for people in the community that are looking to donate, but possibly over by like the skateboard park, the baseball field, softball fields, behind IGA, just kind of another thought, the first thought I had were the first two places you two just actually mentioned, so, and this was the third one, I knew it would be a lot more, but it might just be something to get kids moving and whatnot over by the baseball fields and whatnot back there, so, just another option, but I know that that one comes with a lot more, because we don't have the concrete and everything else back there, but this is a great, a great program, and I read a little bit more about it outside of what they sent to us and...
Who's to say?
Excuse me? Yeah.
That we can't have more than one trail?
I'm not saying that.
No, what I'm saying, the park is, you know, and Jerry, like, you know how I feel about, you come up with where you think it's the best, and I'm gonna go with that, because I'm not gonna go study it, you're gonna do it, you're gonna tell me, you know what you think.
You're not doing hopscotch and woodwork?
No, I'm not gonna tell you where to put it, Jerry's gonna figure out the best spot.
And, and if that goes over really good, maybe we can develop another spot for these
people.
Give them options and let them make a decision on where they think the best...
And they have expertise in that also.
I would think so, right.
Thanks, Jared. And just, just for the people at home, it's United Way is just kind of putting together a program in cities where it keeps kids and adults, people of all ages, active, whether it's playing hopscotch or tossing rocks, not throwing rocks, but onto a square and hopping over it, moving your arms in different ways, and just being active is what this goal is, so, for them to reach out to our city, I think was a good thing, so I'm happy for that. But if there's no further discussion, and we just want to move forward with letting Jerry make this happen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, I expect... You see you there, Mr. Rousey.
Well, of course, I'm a hopscotchin' marvel.
Yeah.
I'll bet.
So the last one we have on the list today is the application to conduct excluded bingo for Knights of Columbus Council, 2583, at the Resurrection Church Hall on April 6th, September 21st, and November 23rd. I feel like they watched the last meeting and were like, Mayor makes a great point, let's just get them all in one, but nonetheless, motion to move? Move by Coivin, support?
Support.
He can have it?
Yeah.
Support by Purpich.
He can have it.
Any further discussion on that? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. The board and liaison updates, anybody, I'll start on this slide this time, Mr. Rousey, did you have anything?
We had EDA, did we, a lot, and we paid off first phase of the park downtown, that payment is done, now we're looking into weaseling in the phase two. What else did we do? Did we do anything? We had some of the others overlooked discussion, the mayor brought up some points, discussion beforehand as to what we could do to dress that place up a little bit more, AKA big truck box or stuff like that, or maybe some optics, but as you know, security and vandalism is our biggest concern up there, so how nice we can make it, depends on how well it's policed and what type of individuals frequent that area, so, other than that, I don't think we had any else, EDA, Jackie?
Lincoln Place is running, running just fine, pretty much, that's the biggest report in a nutshell.
There you go, take that. Is Coivin anything on your end?
No, we had an airport commission meeting that we're working on, it's, it's a work of art, that's all I'm gonna say, what else you have to add?
Well, we're in the process of hiring another part-time groundskeeper, snow removal, grass cutting, that kind of stuff, Joel was kind enough to take my spot on the review board, and I think they came up with a pretty good candidate, at least from the resume I saw it was pretty good. Just right now, it's in the hands of the check, well, no.
You got a check, background check?
Background check, I'm sorry, background check, so the background check is in progress.
Because there is a lot of, and a lot of stuff out there you have to do, and it's more than one person can handle, if you had one person with a family, then it's covered, but one person just can't do it all.
No, it's quite a big area, and we have some, there was also some discussion with them in a sort of transportation that Jackie attended.
Yeah, I was, later.
So there's some information passing through to the people at the airport, seeing what they can do to make that airport better transportation ways.
Yeah, we have some other things working in, coming up, and we will let you know, it's, it could work out very well for the airport, so, it's just in the prelim stages now, and if it comes out, it'll be great, it'll be great, and we will let you know.
Wonderful, thank you. So Lilis, anything that you had, had a part of or saw?
Nope, not in addition to what John reported on.
Perfect. Myself and Jackie, we went and we visited with the IRRB, they've got lots going on, they have what sounds to be, to me, like a lot of money, that it definitely is eye-opening to, sometimes you always think of the real big numbers, when you hear millions, right? But there's a slot for just about everything, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, things like that, and I think we in this upcoming year really need to be more proactive at looking at some of those ones too, not always the big dollar one that's gonna be life-changing, but, you know, some of these other ones where we can combine them with maybe donations from Elks or Masons or the community fund, we can do nice things in our community to sprucing things up, it wouldn't be rebuilding anything but making things look nice, so, it was a forty-five minute meeting that went an hour and a half, I think, so...
Make the eyesores go away.
Right, so some of the simple things, and what they're saying, you know, they have ideas of everything generally, and your mind instantly starts thinking of our town, of all the stuff that we could do with it, so, yeah, just my mind's been turning nonstop since that meeting, so nonetheless, with that, but that is all that I had. Last but not least, we'll go around the room, and Chief, anything special, specific?
Nothing specific, Mayor.
Okay, would you please take a moment for us and soothe the minds of the citizens regarding some of the camera service that we have in our town, generalize, you know, what the purpose of it is and what it definitely cannot do?
Sure, yeah, and we first got our cameras, I think it was like 2016, I think we got part of our grant for it, if I recall, we since operated our camera system about a year, year and a half ago, currently have thirty-seven cameras in town, that includes downtown, City Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, and our library, and then outside the auditorium. We do not use them to work in people's homes, I know that was a concern for some folks.
Don't have the capability, correct?
No, we can't, we don't do that, we use them to solve a lot of crimes, not only in our town, but other jurisdictions from our town, crashing a car down here, minor bank place, a shooting we had later the weekend, so, yeah, they're very handy for us, that's what your intended purpose is, yeah, we have a recycling center, we have the capability of adding our work cameras, we're trying to add maybe one or two, we're depending on what. Yeah, they're a great tool for us.
Okay, and the second soothing motion would be understanding who actually has the ability to see them, which, feel free to enlighten the community.
Yeah, so everything that, we control everything at the police department, as far as who can do what on that, and our city staff downstairs has recent capability to see what's going on at City Hall on a live view, we cannot let record, they can't go back and look at video, and that's for kind of their protection, we've had eyewitnesses of some disgruntled people coming and paying utility bills, screaming, yelling, causing threats to our staff downstairs, so, those cameras cannot see any workspaces, so it doesn't go over to these desks or anything like that, so, we'll make a listen of the conversation, that's all of them turned off, so.
Perfect, and the only people that have access truly to all of the cameras are the people with the badge, correct?
Absolutely, yep, and even then, it's restricted, to my side, I don't have the chief, so, even lots more around the house who have the full capability, so.
Okay, so I guess with that being said, I just opened the door, that if anybody has any more questions, any concerns regarding it, please reach out to Chief.
Yeah, so if there's...
Talk to you, explain to you what's going on, I received calls regarding it just in concern, and I just want that concern to leave, that it's a positive thing for us, it's nothing that anybody is playing Big Brother with, it's a positive.
Most communities have one around here, I don't know, they're from quite links to by law, it just got the same ones that we got, Gilbert's got one, Virginia's got one, we have, well, Higby's got one, so, they're pretty common in every community in Austin.
Wonderful, I appreciate you explaining that a little bit, and again, anybody has any questions, reach out to Chief, he'll give you a helping hand. Anything else from you, good?
Nothing else, sir.
Uh, Jerry?
I have nothing today.
That's because he got a thousand dollars more for a dump truck.
You dodged a bullet there, John.
Anything on your plate there, Mr. Johnson?
So, yeah, Rick, following up from the last meeting, we have to determine about the traffic control on that trip this summer, I did reach out to him about Alex Perez, so we got a contact, or we not invited to, I can help, that meeting, we kind of get an update on where things are at, and I know they're working through like getting contracts and a schedule, doing brothers with a little bit for the work, so, like, we'd be issued a contract that I worked through at work this summer, that's all I have for you.
And are you speaking, when you say that we can talk to Alex about like signage and things like that, is what you're talking, okay, all right, good, I appreciate you looking into that, do what we can do for our community businesses. Jackie, anything on your mind?
No, I'm thinking about Alex Perez, and Linda, where Adam and Jerry, once he's got the signage off here, it'll be nice, maybe Jerry or I go like that, so we can determine we need a supplement with some of our signage, we have some of the money that are operating budgets, that we can do something else to drive people or direct them, or else to no end time?
Sure.
So we don't get forgotten, people cruising by.
Right, I can't stop thinking about the movie Cars, every time we talk about this stuff, Radiator Springs, nobody stops by after a while, and I don't want that to be the case.
That's right, to our mind.
Thank you. Joel, anything on your mind?
Mayor, just that I like when people in the community get involved, and I've got an intern with me today, Otavio, and I thought, what better way to toughen him up to be a future lawyer than bring him to Evlith, so thank you for playing your role in thickening his skin a little bit, happy to have you on today, and, yeah, to see everyone on Monday evening in March at 5:30 for the next meeting.
Correct, the next council meeting will be at 5:30 in this building, the first Monday of March, which is the third, but even more so, want to get the announcement out one last time, we have our city hall, excuse me, our city town hall meeting, February 24th, at the auditorium, will be at 5:30.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty, I said the wrong date, I'm sorry, Wednesday the 26th, yes, Wednesday the 26th, at the auditorium, 5:30, and we're aiming for 7:30, but if... at the auditorium, 5:30, and we're aiming for 7:30, but if we've got good convo and things moving, we'll be there, we'll be there for the people, so, if you have any questions regarding anything on that, feel free to reach out to, uh, the city hall here and Jackie or Steph or somebody behind the desk will give you a helping hand, we look forward to seeing everybody on the Wednesday the 26th. Anybody on the board have anything else, more they'd like to say? With that, we will, we'll call this meeting on this day adjourned, thank you gentlemen.